All right.
Can you just wait for me?
I don't know.
Just joking.
Joy's gender. It's so interesting.
Very well, thank you.
It's like having gender.
Very patriotic.
Did you see the, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. My daughter was here this morning.
Oh, no. Go ahead. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, June 8th, 2017 Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. I'm starting the meeting tonight because tonight is reorganization and so until we elect a chair, I have 20 seconds of fame. Unfortunately, the first thing I would like to do, if you don't mind, is I'd like us all to stand for a moment of silence. We recently lost Liz Sorrell, who was a former assistant superintendent. She is the person that I replaced when I started on June 30th of 2006. Liz was an assistant superintendent here, I believe, for three years and she worked very diligently, especially in the areas of curriculum. In the district, she left and was superintendent in Carver. She retired less than a year ago and passed away very quickly from a very aggressive form of brain cancer. So I just wanted to recognize Liz and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Sorry to start off on that note. I'd like to now take the opportunity and to take any nominations for chair.
I nominate Paula Hatch.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations?
We'll close nominations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome back. At ease. Yay. Folks, if you don't mind, if we could take a couple of things out of order. We have some public participation tonight and some other folks that have joined us. So if you don't mind, let's take a few moments and let those folks interact with us first. Great. The first thing I'd like to do is to make an announcement and an introduction of our new interim high school principal, Ms. Michaela Gill. Michaela has been with our district since 2008. She served as a social studies teacher for three years and has worked as an assistant principal since September of 2011. Michaela applied for the position when our own Jim O'Keahy moved on and was interviewed by our subcommittee and was unanimously recommended to me. And I was thrilled with the recommendation and spent some time with her and have absolute confidence that she's going to do a fantastic job. I'm really looking forward to some of her great ideas and some of the things that I know she's going to bring with new enthusiasm. We're going to miss Jim with all our heart, but the great news is, is we're going to have a wonderful new principal in place and I'm very excited. Michaela's going to speak for a few words, but I did want to mention she has to run because she's actually running back and forth to Boston this evening, transporting relatives for a wedding this weekend.
Yes.
But was kind enough to come. But we have a video of the senior class parade, which was Michaela's idea, and it's a wonderful new tradition. So after she speaks, I did want to show that while Michaela was here, if you don't mind. So, Michaela.
Thank you, Joy. Thank you, everyone. I'm very excited about this opportunity. Obviously, it's a little bittersweet with Jim's departure. I kind of joke sometimes that he's like my big brother going away to college, but not actually coming back. So some pretty big shoes to fill for sure, but I'm excited about the opportunity and I'm looking forward to working with all of you in a different capacity in this role. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent, thank you. And Jim, where are you? Could we get this started? Perfect. Thank you. So this was the senior class parade. Michaela organized this. It's a wonderful new tradition. It was incredibly well received, where we had our seniors, when they had their caps and gowns, go back and visit the middle school and the elementary school where they came from.
Sorry, Joy.
That's okay. Perfect. Nope, you got it.
I'm going to start.
Yep. Again, thank you to Michaela. It's a great new tradition that we've started. I know everybody's looking forward to it again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun.
So I know you need to run back to the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let me get the lights up and everything. Is Jim going to introduce him? We could, yeah. I think he's got a... No, he's got another slide show this way. Do you want to introduce Drew Force?
I will.
Okay, you choose this Drew. Yeah.
So we just recently came back from our trip to New York City, which was overnight. We just came back from, uh, from Lufthairn, but I want to introduce Drew Donahue, who's our student council president. And he went on the trip and he's going to introduce or talk a little bit about the New York City trip. So, Drew?
Okay, good evening. I'm Drew Donahue. I'm a student on Team A2 and just three weeks ago, we came back from our overnight New York City trip. It was really a great experience. We got to see a lot of fun and interesting things. We got to see... There was an option where you could see the Statue of Liberty. You could see the NBC studios. We all got to go to the top of the Empire State Building and we got to walk over to Brooklyn Bridge. And we have this brief video show you of that.
So we have a 30-second clip of the different pictures of kids at different places on the trip.
So, um, thank you for granting us permission to go on this trip and we brought a small token of appreciation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. A New York City thank you. That's very nice. Thank you, Drew. Thank you. This is going to organize my desk. This is just what I needed. Perfect. Thank you, Drew. I need more than that. You've seen my desk, huh? Thank you. Thank you, Drew.
Drew, thank you for acting in that capacity.
Absolutely.
Good time?
Yeah.
Good.
It was great.
Yeah. If I may, I also received a note from a parent on the same trip, just to tie it up. This is from a parent of an eighth grader, Melissa Haas. "Hi, Joy, I hope you are doing well. I just wanted to reach out to you to let you know how impressed I was with the eighth grade trip to New York City this week. I was lucky enough to be a chaperone on this trip. The teachers put a tremendous amount of work into organizing such a great trip for these kids. I was so impressed with how well-run and how much the kids were able to accomplish and see in just 24 hours. It is quite evident that this group of teachers really and truly do enjoy the kids and look forward to teaching them and the kids can easily relate to them. Also, the eighth graders were so kind and respectful to each other, the teachers and the chaperones. It made for such a great time for all. It is just another reason why I am proud to have my kids in the Silver Lake school system. Thank you and your staff for all you do." Proving it. It's okay, you're not... All righty.
Can I just say two things, because I probably won't talk about it when I go on to... But I just do want to thank everybody for supporting the New York City trip. We had around 80 students that go out, that went out to New York City, saw things that they've never seen before, had experiences that they wouldn't have had if it wasn't for the support of the school committee and the superintendent, Joy Blackwood. And I went on the trip as well and I really was, had the ability to experience it with them and to see their faces light up and see things that they've seen on TV, but actually be there and touch it and feel it was really something. And I really do appreciate the support from the committee and from the superintendent, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move this out of the way.
Thanks, Drew. Let's jump back into the organization and I just want to thank everybody for your vote of confidence as having me for your chair again, the chair. I'll do my best for all of us. Can I have nominations for vice chair, please?
I will nominate James Lormer for vice chair.
Second.
Will you close nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Frazier.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of Jim, please raise your hands, please. Okay. All those in favor of Jason? Okay. Thank you. Jim, you...
Thank you.
Nominations for secretary, please.
May I, Jim?
Yes, please.
I'd like to nominate Maureen Springer.
Second.
Okay. Move to... Any other nominations? Move to close. All those in favor of Maureen for secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Treasurer. Nominations for treasurer, please.
Nominate Jason Frazier. Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. We'll close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Assistant treasurer.
Nominate Ed Dejeanay.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. Move to close. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And legislative agent.
I nominate Jason Frazier.
Second.
Seeing no other nominations, move to close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Assistant treasurer.
Nominate Ed Dejeanay.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. Move to close. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And legislative agent.
I nominate Jason Frazier.
Second.
Seeing no other nominations, move to close. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Let's take a crack at some of the subcommittees. I know sometimes we hold off on some, but I think we're all, we've all been sitting in, on the committee for a year and you probably know which ones you're interested in, which ones you're not at this point. Administrative review. I certainly would be willing to stay on that one.
I'd like to stay on that as well.
Okay.
I'm interested in...
Are you? Very good. Jim, are you?
She's going to wrestle.
She's got that vacation high going. How about a couple of alternates as well?
I think I'm still here.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
I'm happy to stay as alternate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Negotiations.
I'd like to stay on negotiations.
So would I.
So would I.
So that was... Okay.
Everybody.
Did I... Mark, did I hear you as well or... No? Okay.
No.
Conflict in my life.
I'll go on that one.
Uh-oh.
Can I have an alternate? I'm sorry?
So why, do I...
Who was...
Are you replacing Mark Aubrey?
Who's stepping off?
Mark's... Oh, it was Mark Aubrey.
Mark Aubrey.
I said yes.
He said yes. Oh, you did? Okay. I'm sorry. I glanced and I thought, I didn't think you were on negotiations, but you said, no, you weren't interested, so I thought it was...
No.
I just looked at Mark. Sorry about that. Okay, so I'll stay on his alternate, so that one's going to stay the same.
Too many Marks on this committee.
Program area collaborative.
I would like to remain on that, please.
That would be wonderful. Thank you for that. Policy? I'm thereby...
Yeah, I'll stay.
Mandate. You'll stay, thank you.
I'll stay.
You'll stay, thank you. Okay. Career and technical ed.
Yes.
Yes.
Stay.
Okay. That was easy. Safer.
Yes.
I would stay on that.
Yes.
I would too, if I was ready.
Okay.
Laura, did you?
I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay.
It's basically everybody but Paula and Eric.
Sure. Any of these subcommittees, they're open to the whole committee, so if you just see one that you might not be a member of that particular committee, you just do that so we have a forum, not so we don't have a forum, sorry. But you're welcome to come to any of the meetings.
Yeah. Revolving funds?
I'd just stay on that one.
I'd like to stay on that.
I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay.
It's basically everybody but Paula and Eric.
Sure.
Any of these subcommittees, they're open to the whole committee, so if you just see one that you might not be a member of that particular committee, you just do that so we have a forum, not so we don't have a forum, sorry. But you're welcome to come to any of the meetings.
Yeah. Revolving funds?
I'd just stay on that one.
I'd like to stay on that.
Can I ask a question about Safer?
Yep.
So, I was obviously new to the committee, subcommittee last year, and I know it resulted as a combination of some other subcommittees, is that right? Historically?
Yes. We combined.
Yeah.
It seemed like there was a pretty heavy agenda on that subcommittee, so I just, you know, I don't know if that...
We took Jim Lormer's spot.
Think about reorganizing the subcommittee again or something. That was just my initial impression, just getting all the other subcommittees and then looking at that subcommittee and just having been part of it, it seemed pretty full of...
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, I don't disagree with you. I think the reason that we combined was similar goals, similar issues, and of course with the building and the envelope study and everything, it is, it is a beefy committee. There's a lot of things, you know, a lot of responsibility with that committee. Mark and Maureen, I don't know if you have any comment?
I'm sorry, that's what she said.
No, I, my comment was just being new to the committee and the subcommittee. You know, my impression of that subcommittee was just that it was incredibly meaty and I just, you know, I don't know the history of sort of how it came to be such a...
Oh, sure.
Such a big committee in terms of content and whether there was sort of thoughts of splitting it back out into other things again or whether that was something that seemed to be working, you know, based on the history.
Well, the number of subcommittee meetings to attend, and I'll just speak to particularly with my profession, I have to take a whole day off to take, to be in a meeting. So this, it certainly helped to be able to be on several committees if they were combined. And a lot of the issues, like Paula said, overlap with the building study and everything that has to do with facilities, has to do with safety indirectly. So it seems to be working, in my opinion, to leave it together, but if there's some proposal of split something off of that...
No, it's just, you know, that was my initial impression, but again, like I didn't really know where it had all come from. It just seemed like a very meaty subcommittee, which is good.
Facilities, fees and safety were probably pretty close together. The revenue committee is something I've been driving, just trying to find revenue sources for the, for the committee and it sort of was created after the fact. There is a, the other committee that we've had was for the administration building, which we decided to put on hold because we really don't have a funding source anymore.
You're welcome. I mean, it makes sense to have that understanding. I know that committee has a lot of responsibility. I do.
Multiple years in a row, the members of that subcommittee, of those separate subcommittees basically were off for multiple years, so we just put it all on hold.
Yeah.
Bottom line, we're trying to get them all on one page.
Yeah, really. Yeah. No double siding.
But you're on the back page.
Now you're on the back page.
13 years off the back page.
Revolving funds. Are you willing to stay on that one? Maureen, are you willing to stay on revolving funds?
Aye.
Okay. Safety. This is the one by contract.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I mean, it's certainly up to everybody. I had the thought of adding another committee.
Yeah.
But because it's part of the contract, I felt it should be someone in the negotiating team. This is the first year we've actually met, but the wording for the safety committee has been in the contract for years, so we've never had a reason to. We were meeting this year because of the air quality and the temperature and the hot days in the room and we, you know, moved along on that. I don't, I don't know what you want to do on it. I guess it's up to everybody if you want to have it as a separate meeting or add it to negotiations or something like that.
Or does it almost fit under Safer?
I don't think it does.
I would say the negotiating committee.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. What will trigger it? A request by the teachers?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, now that we have it set up, we could probably, not, not even monthly, I mean, I think it's as...
A need occurs?
And Kim O'Keahy, if she remains the president, would just contact one of us and try to set something up.
Okay.
I agree with that and also with the next one too, the SIC Bank. I think it's integral to the contract and I think it's the proper place has been negotiations for the SIC Bank as well as the safety.
Which is the way we've always done it.
Take it off of the SFFR?
No, it's not.
No, it's not. This is a different thing.
The safety in the SIC Bank should just tie it to the negotiations, but she got a separate subcommittee. They should not be separate subcommittees.
But what Mark is saying, if you look at Safer, the first word in Safer is safety.
We don't need to have the safety issue. We certainly can be brought in at any time if a safety issue is related to facilities too. That's what I'm saying, if safety issues come up in school, if there's a facility issue, you can certainly address it with us.
I'm concerned because it's part of the contract language and I don't want anything to get muddied with that.
Do you want the safety to play?
No, it'll just go back to negotiations.
Take it off of that.
Yeah. No, 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 no. It doesn't come to there.
Right. That's where it falls out.
Ties into negotiations. We keep our SSFR because we're dealing with things that don't really concern the teachers a lot of the time. You know what? When we talk about safety in our committee and the SSFR...
So do we need a different name for this committee then?
It's often the cameras or the beaker into the schools or things like that.
Negotiations, employee relations, safety, SIC Bank.
Exactly.
So Nurse B.
Yeah, you just said exactly what Joy said to add those two. If we agree that they belong under negotiations, just add SIC Bank and safety under those.
I don't know if we need to add it there. It's already part of it. It's part of it already. You're basically taking it out of negotiations, putting it, starting a new committee. I don't think we need to add it by word to the negotiations because it's actually just part of it already.
Because it already says employee relations, which would be SIC Bank and safety in a way.
So you suggest, like, so then anybody on employee relations can sit in on a SIC Bank or sit in on a...
Safety.
On a safety?
Yeah.
Yes, as long as they know. As long as they know.
Anybody can sit on anything.
No, agreed, but like, does it, you know, somebody designated to...
Do we have to actually have the term...
Take it off of the SFFR?
No, it's not.
No, it's not, this is a different thing.
The safety in the SIC Bank should just tie it with negotiations, but she got a separate subcommittee, they should not be separate subcommittees.
But what Mark is saying, if you look at Safer, the first word in Safer is safety.
We don't need to have the safety issue, we certainly can be brought in at any time if a safety issue is related to facilities too, that's what I'm saying, if your safety issues come up in school, if there's a facility issue, you can certainly address it with us.
I'm concerned because it's part of a contract language, and I don't want anything to get muddied with that.
Do you want the safety to play?
No, it'll just go back to negotiations.
Take it off.
Yeah, no, 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 no. It doesn't come to there.
Right, that's where it falls out.
Ties into negotiations, we keep our SSFR because we're dealing with things that don't really concern the teachers a lot of the time. You know what, when we talk about safety in our committee, in the SSFR...
So do we need a different name for this committee then?
It's often the cameras, or the beaker into the schools, or things like that.
Negotiations, Employee Relations, Safety, SIC Bank.
Exactly.
So Nurse B.
Yeah, you just said exactly what Joy said, to add those two, if we agree that they belong under negotiations, just add SIC Bank and Safety under those.
I don't know if we need to add it there, it's already, it's part of it already, we're basically taking it out of negotiations, putting it, starting a new committee, I don't think we need to add it by word to the negotiations, because it's actually just part of it already.
Because it already says Employee Relations, which would be SIC Bank and Safety in a way.
So you suggest, like, so then anybody on Employee Relations can sit in on a SIC Bank, or sit in on a...
Safety.
On a Safety?
Yeah.
Yes, as long as they know, as long as they know.
Anybody can sit on anything.
No, agreed, but like, does it, you know, somebody designated to?
Do we have to actually have the term Safety?
No.
As a separate, no.
It says it in the contract, but that's in the reason, I mean, I would just leave it as negotiations.
I don't know why it's even here.
It was, I, I added it, in some of the other committees, we actually have it listed on our organizational chart, they have a SIC Bank committee, because what happens is when we get the request, they, they don't know who to go to, and when we don't have it written anywhere, we're not always sure who to approach, like, who's the people to request it, so if it's just on here, it's, it's just a reference for us if we get a ref, you know, a referral, but in the other towns, we actually do have SIC Bank listed as a separate committee, so that was sort of why I brought it up, but, you know, it's just a, just a thought, how to, how to keep track.
I think to keep it, so that we understand what's going on, that they should be moved up to Employee Relations dash Safety dash SIC Bank.
That's fine, just so it's listed somewhere. And is everybody else in agreement with that?
Okay. Are we deciding whether to leave the word safety still in the SFR? That was the only thing that I'm me, I don't care if you have, if you want to list it twice, as long as the teachers understand that their safety committee by contract is with negotiations.
I, I am on the same page too, and I'm okay with that caveat you just gave, if everybody else is.
So, facility safety would mean that the safety of the facility is what?
I'm of the same opinion, I mean, I, I think this, you know, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, I think that the safety committee falls under Safer, so that there's no redundancy, I mean, contract or not, but I don't feel that strongly as one committee member about it, so I'm happy to defer to the majority here.
Well...
And leave it under Employee Relations.
Make another one, if you take the word, if you take the, type the slashes out, make it Facility Safety, Fees and Revenue, if Facility Safety is all one term, and it's the facility, the safety of the facility that we're talking about, I don't know if that, I know we've had this created four words together situation, but really, what our committee does as a facility committee is we deal with the facility safety issues, not necessarily other safety issues that may be involved with police, fire, those kind of issues.
Right, so it kinda, the waters get kind of muddied there, where the most recent issue was more of a facilities management one, where the rooms are too warm, and we're investigating how to tackle that, but as Maureen indicated, there, there can be, you know, student, safety, police, fire, related, et cetera, which is, is a little bit different, so, you know, I, I don't know how you want to handle that.
You want to have Safety thing under the negotiations for some reason?
For that specific purpose, because it's tied into the teachers contacting us, what a concern that they have, and the, if there's something that, that if they come to the negotiation team or whatever, we would then say, well, okay, we're probably gonna go to Building and Grounds, which is what I still call it, because that would be the next step, so it's almost like we're filtering it to decide where it goes.
Okay, and actually, that's probably a wonderful way to look at it, is filtering it. Okay.
We're not, I mean, we can't make a decision there, we, you know, there's only a few of us, we're all wrong.
It's the same thing in Kingston, we do the same thing, and we, and I've met on those committees for many, many years, and it's typically, they're talking about, you know, a drip somewhere, the superintendent is dealing with the issue, or the principal's building with, dealing with the issue, but by contract, two school committee members have to sit there and listen.
Right, right.
So...
But, but it is listed as a committee.
It is.
It's listed as a separate subcommittee.
But I think it's fine putting it in our committee.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's just, it's just a question to have it listed somewhere, so we know who to contact.
And that way we are a filter, just sort of triage, what's the issue, who do we need to direct it to?
Yep, perfect. So in summary, are we agreeing that we will consider it under Negotiations, Employee Relations? Okay? And that's for both of those?
Right, yes.
Yep?
Okay.
Thank you.
For SIC Bank, though, do we need three members for quorum for SIC Bank, is that how that works?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's again, contract.
Yep. Okay.
Yep. How about Sleep Study? Where's that?
I'd like to keep it on the front right now.
Okay.
I have a report due to everyone tonight, but I, I don't feel comfortable disbanding it until we go next little step.
Okay.
I do need to step down from that, it meets, at times, that my day job does not allow me to tend, so if there's someone else who would love to jump on that, please do, I cannot make those meetings.
Ed? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Excellent. Thank you, folks, I, we banged all those out tonight, and that's wonderful. Okay. Any other public participation? I probably should have asked that beforehand. No? Okay. Approval of minutes?
I believe that we approved a regular minutes of May 11, 2017, and released them in the executive session minutes of the same date, but still hold them.
Second?
Thank you. Any further comment? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Okay. Where are the other minutes on the agenda? Okay, we'll tackle those later. Reports of special committees. Silver Lake Educational Association.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Casey Rakowski, and I'm the Vice President at Silver Lake Educational High School for the SLEA, I'm reading a statement from Tim O'Keeffe, the President. I apologize for me not being able to make tonight's meeting especially since it's been lost. The SLEA would like to publicly thank Mr. Mulcahy for his support and fairness over the past four years. We wish nothing but success in the sandwich, but while we are sad to see him leave, we are excited that Assistant Principal McCambridge will be our next interprincipal. I'm confident that together the SLEA and the Silver Lake Administration will continue to work towards maintaining and improving the already amazing Silver Lake School Districts. And I would also add that we appreciate that we're looking into room temperatures and considering air quality as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay, Administrative Review. No meeting?
But I have to interrupt you, because we mentioned at last meeting that we don't have a chair of that meeting, so it has to be called, I guess Jordan will be the one to do that until a new chair is hired, is hired.
Casey is...
Selected into the position for appointed.
Yep, right. We don't need to do that till September, though, right? We don't need to do it till the fall, right? Yeah. September's fine.
Yeah, I just want, I want to keep that there, because if something comes up, we don't have a committee in place.
Sure, okay. Do you think we need to call it before September?
No.
Okay.
Not at this, not that I can think of.
Okay. Okay. Career and Technical Education.
No meeting.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I didn't know if you were gonna do it now, or under your, be my guest? I had, I received a letter, which I shared with the committee, from the town of Kingston, and I'd like to share it publicly while we're on television, to recognize all the wonderful things that our career in technical education has done, so if it's okay, I'll take a moment and just read that. This is from Bradford Norman, who is the facilities and property management person for the town of Kingston. "I just thought it would be a good idea to let you know how pleased the town property management team and I are that the town and school have been working collaboratively on several projects. Elliot Glass is wonderful, and his staff is too. It is amazing the quality of work they have done for us. The property management team consists of Bradford Norman Facilities, Susan Woodworth Recreation, Maureen Thomas Conservation, Paul Basler Streets, Trees, and Parks. The carpentry students this spring could not have done a better job on this gazebo project. I cannot say enough about Tony Rafini and how smooth the project went. When I forwarded it, there were four pictures showing the students building the gazebo, which were wonderful. The welding department that worked last year at the Reed Recreation on all the railings came out great. We now are working with Ethan D'Angelo and Glenn Gausman on having the horticulture department to do a redesign, rebuild of the landscaping at the two fire stations. We are looking at involving the school when we do the gray speech stabilization and rebuilding of the outbuildings. What I like about Elliot and the career and technical education staff is that their first concern when doing a project with us is the level of learning it will give each student. I also want to say the students have been so professional and hardworking, that is a reflection of how good the entire program is. I am looking forward to working with the school in the future, and this type of collaborative project is a big win for everyone. Thank you. Bradford Norman Facilities."
Wonderful, thank you, Cheryl.
It's so nice to hear someone from outside this community, this tight knit educational community, acknowledge, you know, the hard work and dedication of the staff, the administration, and the students. I was overwhelmed. I don't have children at this school yet, I know the work that Elliot does, and the people under his department, and I've seen, just by being on CTE this year, some of the great things these kids get themselves involved with, and I'm inspired when I see it, but to know someone from outside the community took the time to do that.
Yeah, took, exactly.
Really, really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I wanted to mention that I had to go by the, the work that you put up, and I loved that the trailer was out there, you know, Silver Lake CTE, and I saw the kids working there one day, and it was just, it makes you feel good, you know?
Absolutely.
They did a wonderful job.
Absolutely, and I think it helps the towns to see the financial investment they're making in our school system, and I think it's just wonderful for the reciprocity that we're able to bring when our schools go into the towns and they do these projects, and they've done it in all three towns, so we're really proud of our students, but I thought it was especially wonderful that Mr. Norman took the time to write a thank you, so, thank you. Thank you. Chairman's Report. I have, I've received nothing to share with you at this point. Legislative Agent.
So I know I've been taking some time with this recently, I'm gonna try and be at this point brief, I know Joy's gonna speak a little more about the Foundation Budget Review Commission. To believe it or not, the revenues were actually up in May, but were still up by above a percent, over $450,000, $450 million in the red for this current fiscal year, which ends on July 1st, or begins the new one on July 1st. Nothing to really come out of Washington recently, again, we're waiting on the repeal of the Affordable Healthcare Act and the implications that it could potentially have on our, our school budgets. We're also paying close attention to what the Secretary of Education is talking about doing with Title I and Title II funds, and, you know, we're at a constant threat, but there's not a lot of even going on right now.
Okay. Thank you for that. Negotiations.
We're happy to say that we have a settled contract with the SLEA, but the contract year is 2017 to 2020, which is amazing to me, very close with the outcome and the work that everyone put in, it's a very cooperative team. We didn't have, have as many meetings as I thought we would. I wanted to thank Eric, Mark, Aubrey, and Jim for putting up with me and my rants. We settled a little bit differently this year, steps one through 10, we were able to settle at .5 the first year, 1.5 the second year, and 1.5 the third year. What we did was, we took a look at the teachers that are above that step, step 11 and above, they're, that's it, that's the bottom, so we decided to offer them a little bit more, and they were awarded 1.5, 2, and 2 over the course of the three years. The other items we worked on were, a lot of language amazingly was still in there that should not have been, I don't know, it just never cleaned out, different things, a little bit of wording, we updated some language about, around parental leave, the reduction in force, which had some legal language in it, SIC Bank, which was a request of, of the teachers, personal business leave, and the bereavement leave. We had some different relatives and things like that, which hopefully we won't have to use. Reduction in force was a big topic, as the master and the laws has changed surrounding that, so we had a little back and forth with our attorney, but we were able to solve the problems on that. We also included a retirement incentive, so that a teacher that's planning to retire, but hasn't really told us yet, we've offered $1,000 if they can let us know by November 1st, prior to the year they're planning to retire, which will really help us in the budget, budget times. We often find out about a retirement after we finish the budget. The Silver Lake, SLEA ratified it on May 23rd, I believe? And I gave everyone a, I gave you all glimpses of what we were doing after that, but it's pretty much settled, it is settled. One other thing that was key to it was on the professional development, we, we, every year we seem to spend a lot more money than we had, figured for it. We were able to come to an agreement with the teachers that from now on, unless they're taking a master's or a CAGS program, they will, they will limit themselves to two courses. That gives, leaves up a little bit of money for the people that are doing other things, we hope that's gonna work out, and we'll be able to figure the budget a little bit more. You know, we figured $20,000, it comes up to $50,000, it's gotta come from somewhere. Another big part of it was through Joy's efforts and working with teams, we leveled the salary table, and instead of it jumping around every year, steps and lanes, we have an equal amount between the steps, and I have to thank you, Joy, because that's something that in my experience you've been working on for a long time, and I think that was a phenomenal feat, that we, whether we were able to pass that. So I'm asking to make our movey tonight, that we accept the SLEA contract for the year 2017 to 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Wonderful. Thank you all, and I gotta tell you, that was wonderful work by, by everybody in, in the committee team that facilitated that, you, you guys really thought out of the box, and, and I think the, the two groups worked so well together, and I, I thank you enormously for doing that.
A lot of it helps when we have the institutional knowledge that we have, with all the past negotiations that occurred over the years, we were able to really keep track of things that had been asked before, so it's very important, so it's, really appreciate everybody that's stayed on this committee, and over the years, that helped it keep on moving smoothly.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, there's no substitute for the institutional knowledge. Wonderful, thank you.
I'd just, just like to add that, that the majority of the teachers we have currently are in that step lane process, so that impact of the budget moving around is, by having a, a linear approach, is certainly a, a good thing.
Shout out to the teachers, too. It was very, it was a real big revolutionary step, so the, the teachers to help us with that was a key in the negotiations as well, something that Joy had spent a lot of time on, we had, I don't know how many sheets we had on that?
More than I would like to cut out.
Trying to figure that out, and it was, it's not gonna save us a lot of money, but it's gonna make the budgeting system, the budgeting process so much easier.
Absolutely.
To do. I really thank the teachers for, for working with us on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Maureen, anything else on negotiations? No?
We're, the next step is that we're negotiating with our support staff, and we have a meeting set up with them, I believe it's the 14th, but I don't have my calendar with me.
Monday.
And then, on Monday, it's just since Monday? So, good thing you told me.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, it's Wednesday.
Yeah.
We're also, we also have to meet with our administrators. Their contract is up as well, and we need to get that straightened out and moved forward. So, by September, everybody's going to have their contracts, and we're just going to start right off.
Excellent. Thank you. Pack?
So, Pack did have a meeting recently. We did the first read for the budget for next year. And we will be meeting again next week for the second read and the vote on the budget. And we'll also be reorganizing the board.
Adams Scholarship and approximately $150,000 in scholarships distributed this year. The high school artistic endeavors included two plays, Les Mis and Robin Hood, and performed numerous seasonal concerts. Senior art students presented their portfolios in the senior art showcase. Eighty-nine percent of high school students participated in after-school activities. That's always a number to, that we're very proud of. Our carpentry program completed construction of the store, of the second storage shed on campus for additional athletic department storage, as well as other storage. And our CTE, Senior Career in Tech, Technical Education Student of the Year, Caroline, Caroline Vogt of Early Childhood and Care was recognized by the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. Our Silver Lake preschool continues to be full with 32 children. And the Culinary Arts Program, Lighthouse Cafe, continues to expand services and is open to the public two days a week, which is, happens to be one of my favorites. So, as you can see, this is only a few things. I'm sure there are many things that we've left off. We've had a very, very successful year, and we have many wonderful things planned for next year that are already underway. And I'm very excited for the possibilities that will be happening within the districts.
Thank you for that, Chrissy. And we're doing such wonderful things. You folks are doing such wonderful things. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm just saying right now what I'm feeling. I don't have a solution. I don't, I just, it, the budget has to support all of these wonderful things going forward. We can't lose these wonderful things. You know? Maureen?
Thank you for that, Chrissy. Just while you were talking, Paul, I was thinking, you know, I'm sitting here the same way. How do we get it out to everybody else? I mean, we know, we see it on TV. I don't know how many people watch this fun show. But why don't we send it to the boards of selectmen in the three towns? As this is our year of review, we'd like you to know.
Oh, that's a wonderful idea, Maureen.
I mean, I don't think they'd be the whole thing at, at a meeting, but if you give one to each person in our town, we're free.
Yep.
I mean, that's one way to start with it.
Yeah. No, that's actually a wonderful idea.
I mean, we can even bring it to our selectmen and, you know, highlight something.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I was just going to add, I think, I forget who it was, but when I was at the elections in Kingston, one of the selectmen had come up to me and, and had suggested that the school committee, and he was referring to the Kingston School Committee, which I'm the chair of, that we attend their selectmen's meetings and give them updates, if not every meeting, you know, every other meeting or something. That was happening. Joe was actually attending for a while there, a couple of years ago, and giving a selectman update. So, I think it's a great idea. And I planned, from the elementary school committee, to attend the Kingston selectmen meetings. Maybe not all of them, but maybe one per quarter to give them an update on, on the elementary. But I could certainly also give them an update on the region. You know, and I think we could email some things, but actually physically attending and being on TV.
Yeah.
Because I think, no offense, but they do probably have better ratings than us.
(laughing).
Not by much. Right. But it might be good to, you know, bring focus to some of these things, you know, throughout the year. And this is a great document, and if it was, you know, updated. I mean, we get updates from you every month anyways.
Right.
But, you know, to highlight a few things could certainly be helpful.
No, that's a great idea. And I think adding a voice to it, if we could, in all three towns with the selectmen, that, that would be great. And I, you know, we could talk about it from Halifax, but I, I certainly would be willing to put the time in as well.
Joy, do you put a, a thing in the town report?
Yes.
Of the three towns?
Yes.
Do you include some of these things?
Not, not to this extent. I mean, there's sort of a limited space issue. The year in review is something, I don't know if you remember, Joe Shaves always used to say it was his favorite time of year, for those of you that you remember. But, you know, it was something that I started because there's so many wonderful things, and you sort of lose track, because we get so involved with the budget, and we lose track of all the wonderful things happening. And Chrissy did a great job of, you know, continuing, I don't know, the tradition.
It was a lot of work.
But, you know, of, of keeping it going. Because I do think when you put it all together, it's truly astounding how much we accomplish. You know, we're just so proud of all the things that our teachers and students are doing, and, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity. But it is something maybe we could post on our website. Might be another good way of, of keeping that in.
Yeah.
Can I ask? I know, Maureen, it suggested the, the selectmen. Is it, is it also a wise idea to send it to the finance committees in our towns?
I wasn't even going to say that out loud.
Sometimes our finance committees are different than our select people.
Yep.
And that might be a wise choice as well, to say, this is what we, with the money you budgeted, this is what we were able to do.
Yep. That's a good idea.
Yeah. Very good.
With that, I just want to suggest we expand that.
I'm the same people in here.
Further. Sorry to add extra work, but I think it should be turned into a micromanage thing. This is, just to make it clear.
Thanks for taking the chance.
More they say, more they have.
If you're going to go anyway.
Agreed. Thank you for that, Chrissy. I just, I, I couldn't help but sit here and, as my colleagues as well, and, and think about how important this is to, to get out in the public.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Superintendent?
Thank you.
All yours.
Christine was unable to be here with us this evening, so I just wanted to go over quickly our financial report. As you know, we're a few weeks to the end of the year, and we are in good shape. We're continuing to sort of settle out the encumbrances that we have and what needs to get done in some of those final projects, but we don't anticipate any major issue. A couple of areas that, in speaking with Christine, we continue to be a little bit concerned about, but not horribly, is homeless transportation. We're continuing to get all of our budgets in. That is still definitely causing us issues. We just got in all of our May bills, so by, by the time we get those figured out, we'll have a better sense of what our June bills will be. Again, we will be able to meet that, but that has been an ongoing issue. You just never know where students are going, and we're finding that some of the circles of where we're transporting to are a little farther, which I think Mark can probably agree with. It's happening all over.
Definitely can.
Yep. So, that's, that's been a concern. The area that I did want to mention is, you may remember last year, we were very excited to begin our OPEB, which was something I had very much wanted to do. I would like to recommend, and Christine supports, that if someone was willing to, is to make a recommendation that we will move $25,000 into our OPEB fund from our insurance line item. Christine is confident that we will have that. Right now, again, if you remember, we're settling out the money for the grants versus the money into the budget, but Christine is confident that we will have the $25,000. I would very much like to continue, even though it's nominal. I think it's important that we continue the process of adding to our OPEB fund.
I'll make a motion that if we have $25,000 in the insurance line, that the district move it to the OPEB fund.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstained?
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Let's see. Planning for success. So, this year, we worked on establishing our action plan for 2016 through 2018. We worked with a woman named Lori Lickus, who also was working with Pilgrarian Collaborative. So, it was kind of fun. I got to do it with Pilgrarian Collaborative and our district. We did a slightly different approach than Pilgrarian Collaborative. You may remember about, I think it was 2014, no, 2013, we had Patty Grenier, and she worked with us to establish a strategic plan. And we did it differently at that point in time. We had different community events. We tried desperately to get the community to come in. We had roundtables. We had surveys. We approached the community from every way possible. We didn't get a lot of feedback from people, but it was a great process. But it, it wasn't a, a plan that we were able to sort of keep live. It, it sort of sat on the shelf a little bit. So, what we realized was an area that, as a district, I've really been working with all of our staff to try to focus on, and that is meeting the diverse needs of all students. That's something that I think is critical to our success of, of everyone. And it is something that has been supported. We've done some work under inclusive practices with, with the Department of Education. And we really wanted to keep that as our focus. How could, we develop an action plan around that goal, to meet the diverse needs of all students. So, that was how we approached it. We held seven meetings throughout the year. We included all of our administrators, our department heads, our curriculum coordinators. It turns out to be about 25 of us. And to try to get 25 people together seven times throughout the year was no easy task. And again, that was sort of in our spare time. But we really wanted to develop a plan in terms of, how could we try our best to meet the diverse needs of all students? Because again, that is why we're all here, is to meet our students' needs. So, we came up with four different areas as a focus for our school system. We wanted to increase collaboration in all areas, especially teacher to teacher, teacher to administration, and vertically K-12 across the district to meet the diverse needs of all learners. We wanted to enhance and measure teacher efficacy through professional development opportunities that focus on meeting the diverse needs of all learners. We're looking to build administrative capacity to support inclusive practices that meet the diverse needs of all learners. And we want to engage our stakeholders, which is exactly what we just spoke about, in the development, implementation, and continued support of creating a shared district vision to meet the diverse needs of all learners. What we then did is we developed key action and strategic initiatives in order to meet those goals. I don't want to take your time to read through all of these, but again, the key areas are collaboration, professional development, administrative capacity, and stakeholder engagement. Under stakeholder engagement, which is probably the area which may impact you the most, one of the things that we've talked about is trying to create a community showcase district-wide. We did once, I think it was three years ago, Jim, is that right, Jim? When we had the event where we had some, some different things in the hallways. Parents could come and view the schools if they were interested in coming when they were freshmen.
Yeah. It's probably a little longer than that.
Okay. It might have been five years ago. I lose track of time.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the things we talked about is we're losing a lot of kids to charter schools. So, we want our families to come in, view our schools, view our opportunities, view some of the activities that we have. We want to keep them in district. So, sort of creating community showcase was an idea that we came up with. I think it's one that would really build value. We're looking at establishing a curriculum corner at school committee meetings to continue to focus on students' work. It's been on the agenda. Sometimes our agendas really build out, and because of time, we haven't necessarily done it as often, but I think it's really valuable. And I, I personally love it. I mean, that's the reason we're all here, is to support the students' learning. So, I'd love to sort of work at trying to tighten that up and maybe see if we can bring that back. Offer outreach showcases at senior centers, selectmen's meetings, again, exactly what you were talking about. It's nice we're all on the same page. School committee, and, and school committee meetings. Establish school news column with student authors and/or by department. I think that could be a wonderful thing. I'm pretty sure some of the local papers might be willing to support us if we can figure out how to make that work. And invite community members into schools, veterans to history classes, et cetera, very much like Chrissy mentioned in year in review. So, these four areas are the key actions, the strategic initiatives that we're going to focus on. Each bullet, we have pages of documents in terms of who's in charge of it, when we're expecting to meet it, et cetera. We're sort of building this out. This is happening in real time. Some of the outcomes and opportunities we're looking for is for our students. Our hopes is to meet the needs of and engage all learners, providing consistent instruction through grade level and school, provide equal opportunities and access to all students, strengthen engagement and learning, and allow students to be more active participants, create a safe environment that encourages risk-taking, and increases students' sense of belonging. For educators, we hope to increase student achievement and meet the needs of all students. We want to create and embrace the belief that everyone has the ability to be successful and challenge all students. We're looking to create common language in practice and implement common practices, strengthen effective instruction and focus on pedagogy, strengthen, streamline use of common assessments and use of data to drive instruction, and to collaborate and focus on a teacher leadership culture, create a safe learning environment, and self-reflect and identify areas to improve and to share best practices. It's been a great practice, a great process going through this. We also were invited to present this at the MASC conference in the fall, in November. So, we're excited about that, and assuming that will go through. So, I think we did a, a really nice job. Chrissy was instrumental in, in helping to organize this and to reaching out to Lori Lickus, and we were able to receive the, receive a, a grant and to provide this to our staff. So, I think it's going to really give us a wonderful foundation and a framework to move forward. And again, personally, my goal is, is to try to meet the needs of all learners, and this is really our game plan on how to get there.
Sure. I just ask you.
Question. I have a question. So, you, you were mentioning that, that we are losing a lot of kids to charters, which is obviously a huge concern of mine. We know that the charters send out nice postcards, emails, all kinds of.
And we can't stop it.
Things in the mail. I know. I, I get them because I have kids. And they look great. I have two questions. One, how many kids are leaving who have IEPs, who are in special education here and leaving, going to charters, if any?
I, I don't know that I could identify that, but we do have students who leave, and I don't know specifically that, that percentage. If I remember, I'd have to go back through my files. I think, might have been 40 or 50, if I remember right. I can't remember the, I had a line graph in the budget.
Total number of kids or total number of IEPs?
Total number of students. I don't have my budget with me, but I had done a line graph, and I don't remember the number off the top of my head in the budget. Does that sound about right? I think that was about what it was.
Do we just have that information? Is that information something that was shared with us?
It was in the budget, was the number of students per year that we were losing. I've, I've been charting the number of students we're losing over time to private schools and to charter schools. It was something that we really hadn't looked at. Oh, Mark, thank you. That's exactly what I need. Soon as I saw the chicken go by, I knew it was the right one. It's one of the line graphs, I think, in the beginning.
My other question is about mailing. I mean, I don't know if we want to go there. That's a big expense.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight people total?
Yep.
But we don't know how many IEPs?
No, we couldn't identify that. That would not be a good choice.
Talking to Jali.
Not allowed to identify that? Is that what I'm saying?
We, we, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate.
Got it. Okay. So, what about sending a mailing? I mean, is that something that you think would be effective? Or not necessary?
I honestly don't know. I would love to try and do the community showcase. I think that's a great idea. You know, most, it's, 48 is not a huge number when you look at our percentages, but it's a number that I don't want to get any larger, and I'd like to decrease. So, what I really want to do is, you know, as students are going through, once they're there, we do have students who come back. I don't know what that percentage is. Jim may know, but I know every year, we have at least a handful of students who, who come back.
Yeah, we have students that return from charter and private schools every year.
Yep.
Kids that go out after eighth grade and come back and the end of ninth grade and.
Can I ask another question? I happen to know one who left in December and was back in March. So, did we lose, did we lose money when he left, and then did we get it back when he came back?
I don't believe we get it back. I, I'd have to go back through, but I'm, I'm not positive that we do.
Wouldn't he be on your October 1 report?
If he was, if he was on the October 1 report, I believe we would have money, but if they left prior to, you know, prior to that.
If it's, Mark's right, the, whatever is reported in October one, it's really not even October one anymore, but we should call it that.
That's what we're calling it, sorry.
Exactly.
No, 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 I always say, I say the same thing all the time. If it's on that report, it's whoever's reporting, so they get the-
So, you own that kid till following year?
Yeah, right.
Laura, did you have something as well?
You mean to come back?
I just wanted to acknowledge what a tremendous amount of work this kind of, of an action plan is. In March of where I worked, we're doing the same process with the same consultant, and just finished up our seventh day, and it is a tremendous amount of work.
Huge.
Really, when you look at a document like this and you see sort of how simple and organized it is, it looks very, you know, sort of basic, but it's sort of like an iceberg. There's so much more to it.
That's a great description.
Thank you.
You know, just to know that, that now, you know, school, you know, school plans and teacher plans and other, you know, everything will be tied to the same goals.
Yep.
And it's, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge what an amazing amount of work it is, and congratulate you on it, because it really is, is so hard to get it, you know, and maybe not everybody thinks it's simple, but when you look at this, it's, it's so much work to get it to this point and distill it down to just these words and these exact words, and I'm sure you did a lot of wordsmithing and a lot of reorganizing.
Yeah.
Just, it's, it's a lot of work, and I just wanted to acknowledge that and say congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Getting, getting to the end, which really is just the beginning of the next step.
Exactly, exactly. The iceberg. And again, it was, it was definitely a joint project, so, thank you.
Maureen.
Paul, just to go back to what Laura was talking about, advertising, how the charter schools tend to do that. I don't believe we can do it as a school committee because it would be using public funds or something like that, but a thought came to me that, that I think would work great, would be to contact our middle school and high school parent teachers, and we could certainly work with them to put together a flyer and have all that outwork. And if they, if they were to endorse it as parents, that would be one way we could do it. And, and they have fundraising groups, so they may have, you know, some money that they can decide to propose.
Okay. We should almost start capturing all these ideas and seeing what we can, thank you for that.
Maureen, I believe you're right, I think that something came up a couple of years ago.
It did, that's what made me think of it.
And we determined that it was, you know, the first.
But, you know, we have a lot of boosters, we have the football team, we have a lot of different groups that are bringing money in, and I know that the PTO is pretty active here in, at the middle school.
Yeah.
Here we are at the middle school, so here and at the high school. I think it's worth it, I mean, I'd be willing to contact them. Maybe something we could build up over the summer and get it out by the first of school or before then.
Yeah. Can I, I'm going to just ask a question here, how appropriate or inappropriate it might be, I don't know. The folks that have children that leave to go to either charter schools or some other private school and come back, is there any feedback or points that we could get from the, their experience that we could somehow tactfully share with?
There was that one letter that I'm remembering, Jordan, to us, so that we got in our packets at one point.
Bye.
But can we have a place to listen?
Yeah, and then can we, can we share it out to a broader audience? You know, the, you know, the middle school student parents, are they thinking while they're in middle school about what they're doing for the kid's high school experience? Is that the point where they're making the decision of private or charter or, you know? I don't know. Again, I, I think any ideas we can throw out there and kind of think about and-
Right. I mean, and again, this is, this is beginning, so if you want to look at this and continue to think, and if you come up with some ideas and you want to send me an email, a text, phone call, whatever, pretty accessible. I, you know, we can continue to sort of keep a running list. As to Laura's point, this is sort of an iceberg, this is really just the tip here. That was a great visual, I loved that. So, it's, these are some ideas that we came up with, but I, I agree, I think there's lots of capacity here. It's just a question of who and how and what's the best way to implement it. But, you know, at this point in the year, just so you understand, most, every parent knows where the kid's going next year.
Yeah.
So, everything is timing. So, any ideas we have would be, you know, we would need to move towards next spring, because that's pretty much when everybody's applying to give out.
And I would point out too, that it, the, the numbers, it's only four from Halifax, five from Plimpton, and thirty-nine from Kingston.
Exactly.
So, it says darn Kingston.
Yeah. Again, those percentages will get you, so, thank you. But, again, this is something that we'll, we'll get out, I'm just doing the first presentations to school committees, we'll get this posted on our school website. This is sort of happening in real time, and again, we're sort of building it out, but we're really proud of the document, and I do want to definitely thank Chrissy because she was very much instrumental in helping to organize and to get everybody to the meetings and to get Lori Lickus to work with us, so, and it's been no small feat to get to this point, so, thank you.
Excellent.
I did want to mention that you have in your packet all of the executive session minutes since I've been superintendent that have not been released. So, I don't think tonight would be the time to necessarily vote them, but what I would like to ask you to do, if you could, is to please read them, and for the next meeting, we can vote them. I can't send out executive session minutes as an email attachment because email is public, so I have to give them to you in hard copy. So, if you could review them, and then next month, we can vote whether to hold them again or, or to release them. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, these are all the executive session minutes that have been held since I've been superintendent, so they're over the last two years. One of the topics on many of them are negotiations, so many of those will certainly be available at this point in time, okay? So, I believe this to be correct, Lisa and I have spent a lot of time going back through, but this is a review which is sort of required by our policy. Okay?
Okay.
So, thank you. Couple of things, just to finish out, National Night Out, we were approached again by the town of Kingston, and they would like to use our facility again for National Night Out. Two years ago, we held it, we used to always hold it in Kingston at the intermediate school. They sort of outgrew it, and also Kingston is in the process of changing the soccer fields, and so the place where we used to hold it is no longer available.
It's a regional event.
Yep, I was going to get there, thank you. And it is a regional event, and it's a very popular event. I have to say, I went last year, and it was great fun, it really is. All the local police stations come, all the local restaurants come, they have booths, they have t-shirts, they have free food. All the restaurants have, the clam chowder was great. They had motorcycle events there, they have a helicopter that comes in and lands, canine dogs are there. It's really a huge event, it was so much fun, there were kids running all over, it was great, it was really great. So, they approached us again, they used the road going back to the middle school, back behind, so they used the whole road, and they were right up against the fence, they had all the booths, and then the back parking area where the motorcycles, the bikes, helicopter, et cetera. They're really pleased the trailers are gone, so now the whole parking lots are free. So, we're really excited, I did want to let you know that we'll be holding it again, we're hosting it, and we will not be charging them. That's sort of our community event. I know that was going to be a question, I'm reading your mind, you should be scared, Mark. So, it's just really an announcement. I wanted to let you know that we have a new director of facilities. I will be meeting with her tomorrow and hopefully having the contract signed. Her name is Cara Mia Diagalo, I love her name, by the way, and she is coming to us, believe it or not, from Syracuse, New York. She has a, her family originally is from the Middleborough Plymouth area, and she is very anxious to move back to this area. I don't know why she wouldn't love the Syracuse weather, she's very anxious to get away from the snow belt. So, her father unfortunately recently passed away, she inherited the house, and she's very anxious to come back to this area. She has worked in Syracuse University as campus planning, design, and construction since July of nineteen ninety-six, so she's very experienced. She's been the senior project manager there. Prior to that, from ninety-two to ninety-six, she worked as the Pyramid Company of Anandaga, and she was also the clerk of the works for the Jubilee Homes of Syracuse. She graduated with a bachelor of fine arts and also a major in architecture, so she's got a great background. I'm really excited to welcome her to our district and really look forward to some of the work that she'll provide, and she will be hopefully coming on board very early on in July. So, I'll let you know a little bit more once we have all the contracts signed, but I do just want to let you know that we had a great group of applicants, I think it was about twenty-three to twenty-eight applicants. We reviewed fifteen resumes, and of the fifteen resumes, we bought eight forward for interviews, we interviewed eight people. As an educator, I decided to give them all homework, I can't tell you how excited they were about it. So, I gave them the actual Gale Associates five-year plan that they had for the middle school and the high school, and I gave them two nights, a little unreasonable, but they did it, two nights to put together a five-year capital plan at two hundred thousand a year. So, it was real-life homework, it's exactly what we're dealing with. So, we had two people who did exactly what I was hoping for, put together an excellent presentation for us, and we bought both of those people back as finalists, and I'm happy that we'll be welcoming Kara on board. So, again, you'll get to meet her either over the summer or come next fall.
Wonderful.
Love an introduction when she feels comfortable.
Yeah, absolutely. I think she's going to do a great job for us, I'm very pleased, has a great background. Foundation Budget Review Commission, do you want me to take this, Maureen, or did you want to? I got the information, there's a double-sided-
Do you have the information here?
Yep. Do you want to speak to it, Jason?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, this has been coming up in my legislative reports a lot recently. The state budget in FY15 actually established the Foundation Budget Review Commission, just so everyone knows that this is actually an entity of our own state government. There was representatives on it from the State House and the State Senate, as well as from MAS C. MTA was also involved, there was business organizations involved, governor's council members involved, the commissioner of education is involved. This was not a special interest group that came up with these recommendations, it was actually our government working the way it's supposed to work. There was six public hearings that were held between October of two thousand fourteen and June of two thousand fifteen to come up with the resolutions and recommendations. And what they found out when they were doing this review was there was two major areas of concern where the ed reform of nineteen ninety-three didn't really take into account how health insurance would start affecting municipalities, and also how special ed was going to be calculated moving forward. For example, according to the commission, currently towns spend more than one hundred forty percent of what was originally in the formula for our schools back in nineteen ninety-three. For special ed, they calculate the out-of-district costs at twenty-five thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars, and serving on PAC, which is one of our cheapest options for sending kids out of districts for special ed, I can tell you that's a gross understatement. So, basically, we've, we've realized that we're about eight hundred million to two billion dollars below where we need to be to actually satisfy what the ed reform of nineteen ninety-three was trying to do. So, the commission has come forward with some language that we'd like the school committees to read and then take a vote to support, and I'm going to read that language to you now. Whereas the constitution of the Commonwealth requires, "It shall be the duty of legislatures and magistrates in all future periods of this Commonwealth to cherish the interests of literature and the sciences, public schools and grammar schools in the towns. And whereas McDuffie versus the Secretary of Executive Office of Education declared, 'The Massachusetts Constitution imposed an enforceable duty on the magistrates and legislatures of this Commonwealth to provide education in the public schools for the children there enrolled, whether they be rich or poor, and without regard to the fiscal capacity of the community or the district in which such children live.' It shall be declared also that the constitutional duty is not being currently fulfilled by the Commonwealth. And whereas Hancock versus the Commissioner of Education concluded, quote, 'I do not suggest that the goals of education reform adopted since McDuffie have been fully achieved.' Clearly, they have not. Nothing I say today would insulate the Commonwealth from a successful challenge under the education clause in different circumstances. And whereas the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center report, Cut in Class, found, 'The real value of the original foundation budget has eroded significantly over time, due in large part to the rapid cost growth for healthcare and special education. Since the foundation budget's original design did not foresee this rapid cost growth, spending reductions have been forced in other key areas, especially regular education teachers.' And whereas the Foundation Budget Review Commission resolved, 'The good work begun by the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three and the educational progress made sense will be at risk so long as our school systems are fiscally strained by the ongoing failure to substantively reconsider the adequacy of the foundation budget. Therefore, we, the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, petition the one hundred ninetieth General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to implement, without further delay, in full, the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission.'
I move that we accept this to contact the state, and we am supporting it.
Second.
Let me just clarify, contacting the state is sending a written letter signed by us, okay? Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, Jason, Maureen. Okay, I did just want to remind everyone, we do have MAS C. If you have early bird registration, I think it's a savings of about a hundred dollars if you are interested and want to let us know, Jason? Yes?
Please.
Okay. Would you want me to sign you up, or do you want to send the form in to Lisa, or how would you like to proceed? For the fall, it's an early bird registration?
What's the date on that?
November, let's see, here, November?
It is early this year.
First through the fourth.
First through the fourth.
But you don't have to go all the days?
Right.
Wednesday is free for the legislative agent, but there's an end-of-year reduced rate, it's a hundred dollars less, it's three seventy-five instead of four seventy-five, so if anybody thinks they're interested, it would save us a hundred dollars if we sign up early.
And what's the date you need to know that by, Joy?
July fifteenth, is there early bird? Are you a yes?
I'll do it through the day job.
Okay, got it. And Jason, yes?
Yes, please.
While we're talking about that, I move that Jason Fraser is our representative-
Yeah.
Okay.
The delegate, the delegate.
Yeah, the delegate. Is there a second? Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
I'm, I am thinking of going again.
Okay.
This year, it's been a few years since I've gone, so, let me come back to you.
Okay. Yeah. I sent, I'll be spending my wedding anniversary with you.
Your husband will be thrilled, yeah.
What year is that? Is it paper?
Oh my God, I don't know.
It's not laundry.
The separate vacation year, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, it's not the appliance year. There should never be an appliance year.
No, no, that's, that's just wrong on every level.
Yeah, no, it should always be a small box that glitters.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Joy, for that.
If I can follow this.
Yes, please. So-
Did one as well.
So, the only thing that I, I did want to end on is this is Mr. Mulcahy's final meeting, I knew I was going to cry.
You didn't get the star.
I didn't get the sentence out. So, this is Mr. Mulcahy's final meeting. I will miss him terribly, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with him. As I think I've mentioned before, Jim and I started together, and I have built quite a bond with him, and it will be a huge loss to the district professionally and on a personal level. Jim has been in rock-solid principle, he has been very innovative in some of the programs that he has brought in, and Sandwich will be very blessed to have him. I will miss him terribly. He is going to be on the Cape, so I might have to go visit Sandwich once in a while to see him. From the committee, we have a couple of Adirondack chairs, which were made by our students for Mr. Mulcahy to sit and relax, since he doesn't have to drive back and forth up here any longer. He'll have plenty more time, so he can sit by his pool in his beautiful new chairs. And we also have a wonderful cake from Culinary that we can have at the end of the meeting. I did want to mention that Vocational was very supportive of the idea, and even though technically their shops are closed, they decided to make an exception for Mr. Mulcahy.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, for all you've done.
Thank you, Joy. Very nice of everyone.
Before we move on, everybody knows what we're supposed to be doing now, okay? Hold your ass. I just want you to know, okay, you can open them, you're really going to miss us.
Bunch of clowns. Good job, good job.
He can get his nose on.
Yeah.
That's okay, Jim's always a clown.
So, this is for you, and this is for Joy when she comes visiting.
Excellent. Very good.
I make it too comfortable.
She continues to seek your advice.
I'd like to say something.
Please.
No, this is really hard for me. This is a quote that I use often with people that are leaving a place. You never really leave a place you love. Part of it you take with you, leaving a part of yourself behind. And I can't, today I was trying to imagine all the things that I've seen you do, and taking the rings after Rich left, and it's, you took what was good and needed better. And I, I just think that's an incredible thing. The first graduation that you had, I still remember, the one thing that cut me was right at the end, and we had all the kids come up and take a selfie.
Yeah.
And I sat there and I thought, oh my God. And not the generation, like a whole generation just went by me in a flash. I hope, and, and I wish, I pray, that the hinges of our friendship never grow rusty.
Very nice.
Thank you, Maureen. Very nice. I appreciate everything, that, our relationships, the, the working relationships, the personal relationships, I'm going to treasure them forever. This is, this is my home, literally, figuratively, this is where all my roots are, this is where my, my parents still live, this is my, this is my place, and I think it'll always be my place. You know, my, my children have their own place, and that's where I'm going to join them, but, and that'll have a special meaning to me as well, but not the same as here. It's, it's, you know, graduation day was very emotional. Mrs. Gill has never seen me cry, not many people have, but, yeah, I was as close to I was going to get to tears on, at the podium on Saturday. This is-
It's a great speech.
Yeah. It was.
You, you guys do an outstanding job, and everybody involved in school committees everywhere, this is volunteer work, and it's, I appreciate everything that you, that you do. You know, this has been, this has been one great ride here, and I'm not going away forever, I'll be visiting. You know, Mrs. Gill said I won't be coming back. It's just like I'm going away to school, but I will be back. I'll be visiting. I'll always have my eyes up here. You know, I feel like I've had, just like everyone else here, a hand in building, literally, building the building across the street here, the high school, and I know every nook and cranny of that building, and the people that are in it day in and day out that make it alive. And so, the SLEA, Casey, and everybody that, you know, we've kind of, you know, that staff and myself kind of have grown together over the past decade, and everybody here on the committee that I've worked with from the beginning, and people that have come on, you know, it's just, it's a special place. It's a real special place. And obviously, I love all the towns. You know, Plinton has a special place with me, but Kingston, Halifax, Plinton, and even way back to the beginning, Pembroke, which I know is, yes, I know it's arrival, but that was part of my childhood. So, this, I just, this place is awesome. And I thank all of you for all your support and kindness and friendship and everything else over the years, so I'll miss you all.
Thank you. Likewise. Okay.
Thank you.
New business? I don't know that we have any right now. Old business, the administration building?
No problem.
Community outreach. Yeah. Community outreach.
It's still there.
Goodness. Community outreach, I think we talked a little bit about that earlier, in some ways. Jumping to principals' reports.
Okay. So, first of all, I'm sure everybody saw some of the things that were in the lobby on the way in. We had our step-up day today, where each student came to Silver Lake Regional Middle School, eager to meet their new team teachers, eager to meet their classmates from the three towns. Students were excited and anxious. Not to dissimilar than my own children, as they were coming through, they were excited. I'm excited for tomorrow, they had. They also said I'm anxious. You wouldn't think that the principal's children would be anxious, but yes, they're just like every other child that we have. They come in, and they're anxious, too. But we do a, you know, we, as a district, and support certainly from the school committee and superintendent's office, do a very nice job coordinating through every single building that we have, that transitional process. And we put them on with the students that they're going to be with next year, with the teachers they're going to be with next year, and really embrace that opportunity for them to get excited about the kids they met today, get excited about the teachers they met today, and go home with a newsletter and some information on clubs, which I'm sure you guys are out there, and a video that we play, which is last year's eighth-grade video that we play in the last day when we do our eighth-grade ceremony. So, it was really, it was a great day. Kids were excited, all the way down to our seventh-grade kids that were upstairs yesterday afternoon getting their teams, running around the hallway with your team newsletter, and, you know, so it was great. And it really is a great day, and it's a great opportunity for me, as an administrator, as the principal, to meet the new kids coming in and get excited with them and talk about the things that we have planned for them for next year. And that's part of my speech within the auditorium, that I'm so excited about the things we have planned for you guys when you come up here next year, and I can't wait for those things to happen. And we talked a little bit about that. So, it really is a great day, and I'm very fortunate that I've worked with Jim through these years, because obviously, our communication has been so strong throughout the years, and he really has made my job so much easier. And I will absolutely miss him, and it will be tough. So, I want to thank him for that.
Thanks, Jim.
Moving on from a sad note, which that was, and I'm sorry for that, but evening excellence, we had our evening of excellence, so we had a hundred and eighteen students fill our auditorium, and we were able to give accolades for their academic achievements. It was a great evening, capped by our own Drew Donahue, who was there earlier, receiving a leadership award from our Silver Lake Regional Middle School, and it was just such fantastic night. Parents poured in, and it was really a great night. Actually, it made me wish the auditorium was a little bit bigger.
That's on the list after the Ed building.
Yeah. So, but it was a great night. It was a great night for parents to come in and really support their children and their academic achievements over the years that they've had here. And it's a great opportunity for us to look back at what they've done and the things that they've provided for our climate and culture and their academic achievements, and recognize that for them as well. So, that was a great night. While we're talking about academics, I'm going to talk about the National History Bee. We had two students that went and competed at the National History Bee. Not only were they making it through the regional rounds as champions, but they went to Atlanta, Georgia, and competed in the rounds. And they came back, and they talked about what an excellent experience it was. It was a national event. They got to meet students. There were other regional champions throughout our entire nation, and they got to experience that, and they came back and just said, "Wonder, wonderful event." And I was lucky enough to go with my son last year, who competed, and it is everything that they had said it was, and a little bit more. And it's just a real good opportunity for them, again, to meet other students that are competing in these academic events. It's just great. So, I want to thank Anna Tunas and Connor Hohn for their participation at the National History Bee. We had Challenge Week this week, so this is a week that the peer leaders kind of do a climate and culture, and it kind of winds up with our Step-Up Day. So, it goes through Express Yourself, Hero Day, where we ask the students to take on a piece of what their hero brings to their strength from their hero, and bring that to our school. Equality Day, and today was School Pride Day, of course, because they are all Silver Lakers coming in the building today, so the School Pride Day was great. And we finish up with Friendship Day, which is tomorrow, which we say, "Come in, and we really want to complement with acts of kindness towards each other." And that's Friendship Day, which is tomorrow. So, I want to thank the peer leaders for doing that every year. They do such a fantastic job, and the kids really all buy in and do a great job at that as well. I do want to mention our Invention Convention. They went out and they competed, and one, you know, we had three groups, and one of the groups brought home a trophy, honorable mention, and that was the Portable Water Refinery Project. So, John Marquetti and Mikhail Cargill came home with the trophy, but we also had Cleat Heats, heated soccer cleats, by Matt Mello, Carolyn Dean, Max Frida, Abby Powers, Haley Newton, Jamie Carr. And this one I found very interesting, too, was the Infinity Fly. We've all seen the drones that fly around, and they cut out in like twenty minutes. The kids decided that they would try to figure out a way to keep that in air as long as they want, and Mark, you can appreciate this, a solar-powered drone.
Nice.
And they called it the Infinity, and they put soul, and they said, as long as the sun was out, they can stay outside with their drones. So, Luke Henry, Matthew Hybertson, and Tim Owens for the Infinity Fly. And they had the opportunity to also display it for our faculty during the lunch period today, down in Julie Walker, who's the advisor, our tech teacher, which we hired a few years ago. And our faculty went in and out of the room and got an opportunity to see.
Thank you. Policy. We haven't had one. No meeting, yeah. Revolving accounts? No meeting?
No meeting.
Safer.
We're actually going to have a short meeting tomorrow. We put the bids in on our septic system, and they're not quite what we thought they were going to be, so we'll have some more information for everybody next morning.
Okay. Thank you. Sleep study.
Oh, sleep study. I have something I'd like to read about that. After meeting over the last twenty months, the start times committee feels more information is required before a recommendation can be made. However, after reviewing the Masbo Transportation Review Report, as a committee, we do feel that there may be some inefficiencies within the routes, which could lead to some cost savings. We support sharing the report, we ask for support in sharing the report with first student for review. When the bus routes are determined to be completely efficient, we can then discuss reconvening to review more data on the start times. And with that said, I'd like to move that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee accepts the transportation study and approves sending the first, setting the study to first student requesting to review bus routes in the tri-towns with a focus on better efficiency, shorter routes, and fewer buses.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon Mark.
And I know I wasn't there, Maureen. Did we discuss the limit on how long the kids are on the bus?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Wonderful. Thank you. Treasurers' report.
Before we begin the formal report, I just wanted to say, and this is on behalf of Ed as well, and Ed, you're not trying to put any words in your mouth at all, but taking the appointment as treasurer and assistant treasurer carries some rather significant duties, and I would just ask that the committee consider if there's any association of treasurers, any support from the State House, where Ed and I could receive online training, get email updates about new things that are happening. I note that town treasurers can lean on each other, and it's just sometimes I feel like I'm floating in space, and luckily Christine does a good job trying to keep me up on my role as treasurer for this district, but at the same time, I'm supposed to be the one with oversight over Christine, and I don't like putting her in that position either. I'd like to know my role better, basically what I'm saying. So, thank you for reappointing me as the treasurer of the committee. I love doing the work for you, but I just, I am concerned about my level of expertise with what I'm actually doing on your behalf.
Well, I'm glad you're sharing that feeling, if you're experiencing it. Joy has offered to look into it.
Masbo. I'll look into it through Masbo. There may be some training there.
Thank you.
I think also, Joy, that MASC may have some training.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah. I'll look into both of those.
You pay dues to them, so.
Yep. We pay to both, so that's great. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure they have.
Okay.
Come on outside all the time. I haven't seen anything for treasurers. Okay. Thank you, guys. So, I had to do this kind of on the back of a napkin, so let's make sure my numbers are right. Please double-check these when we get back to the office.
Did you not get the list?
That one should have been a roll of paper towels.
It was there.
So, as far as I know, there was fifteen warrants circulating the table today, two of which were payroll warrants, for a total of one million, five hundred, eighty-one thousand, three hundred, seventy-nine dollars and four cents. There was thirteen regular warrants going around the table this evening. I hope you had a chance to look at some of them. Some of them had some quite high numbers. They totaled nine hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents. And again, these are my numbers. I checked them twice, but there might be an error.
There's somewhere along the way when people were signing it, it might have got mixed with your papers. Sorry.
No problem.
It was there.
I was a math teacher, lots of fun.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. I did want to, if I may, with the warrants, if people saw my name on these, we had a somewhat unusual situation with CTE. Our students need to get their OSHA cards.
Oh, yeah.
And they no longer will accept any payment except a credit card, and we do not have a school credit card. So, I, yeah, we will get one. I know Mark's making a face. Thank you. So, I volunteered my credit card. So, this was just reimbursement for the, all the kids' OSHA cards. So, there were carpentry, welding, carpentry, welding, automotive, and horticulture. So, that's what the reimbursement's for.
Thank you.
Jason.
Just as the treasurer, if we can put in for a debit card instead of a credit card, I would prefer that we pay things with actual money instead of putting ourselves temporarily in debt. I just think it sets a better.
To owe somebody individually.
Yeah. It just sets better precedent for ourselves, but also for our students.
Okay. Well, I'll have Christine. We've been looking into it, but we were desperate and needed it, and Christine was gone, so I was available. Mine was hot, anyway.
All righty. Union thirty-one, no meeting.
Again, that's a committee that needs to meet. Eric can probably call it, because he's still on the committee.
Right. Yeah, Christine needs to get the bids done, and then we'll hold that.
Okay.
But can I just ask, have the elementary schools reorganized?
I.
Have they appointed people to?
Everyone has reorganized now.
Okay.
Our last one, yes, everyone has now.
So now's when we should meet, as soon as you need us.
All righty. Chrissy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets, you will find the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen year-end review. As you can see from the five-page document, we have been up to many, many wonderful things within the district, within the region, and I'd like to highlight some things for you at this time. Within our administration this year, we really worked hard to continue to build capacity within the administrative team. We formed separate professional learning communities. One was completed with the superintendent, myself, and the building principals, where we looked at, we read the book, Grit, by Angela Duckworth together, and we used that as a launching place for wonderful discussions. I also participated in a professional learning community with the curriculum coordinators using the same book. We also formed another professional learning community with myself and the assistant principals, which was very nice to have that opportunity with them, and an opportunity for all of them to meet together once a month. We read Lost at School by Ross Green together, and again, it was some, we did some nice case study work around his work as well. Skipping down, I'm not going to go through the elementary things with you necessarily. In the middle school, around curriculum and assessments, we continued to pay attention to differentiating how we teach the learning standards in the accelerated sequence, with a focus on raising the growth scores of algebra, of grade-eight Algebra I students. We also obtained a Project Lead the Way implementation grant for the middle school, which will allow us the opportunity to offer two classes to the seventh and eighth grade in the future for robotics and automation and science of technology, which is very exciting. We successfully piloted two books at the middle school as part of a curriculum review as we transitioned to the new science, tech, and engineering frameworks. We did end up choosing McGraw-Hill as our sixth or eighth resource moving forward. Middle school students took part in a number of technology competitions this year, including the Verizon App Challenge, Football Challenge, Invention Convention, and Robotic Club Competition with neighboring school Duxbury. We also incorporated more online opportunities for students to do homework, classwork, and discovery investigations, so as to better prepare for the next generation MCAS tests. The Pearl was added to the eighth-grade ELA curriculum, and we incorporated more online reading, writing, and annotation, which was very helpful with the increase in technology due to our one-to-one initiative at the high school. Within the high school, we continued revision and alignment of our courses. In particular, we are looking to revise our Algebra I course in both buildings, so as to incorporate more learning standards on quadratics. This is to ensure readiness for the next generation MCAS in grade ten, and to reduce time spent on quadratic functions in Algebra II. We also had joint math and science department meetings to continue to explore and start to find solutions to alignment issues. We're working to better understand how we can use common mathematical language in both departments, and help science teachers recognize where certain math concepts are taught within the curriculum. We submitted a syllabus for and got approved by the College Board for new Advanced Placement Computer Course, AP Computer Science Principles. We had four students take part in a robotics engineering independent study class, which resulted in a number of presentations to the public and job offers made to two of the students involved. Mrs. McDonald, senior class, read The Things They Carried, and the grandfather of Sean Curtis, a senior, came in to speak with the class. He was a Vietnam chopper pilot. Hundred twenty-five students took the AP English Language and Composition Exam, which was the most ever. And there were two successful Shakespeare field trips, Hamlet in the fall, and Midsummer's Night Dream in the spring. Within both buildings, we continue to focus on how we can improve our efforts to meet the diverse needs of all students. Effects include modeling how to differentiate learning standards and sharing best practices around pedagogy. Around the model evaluation system, we move teachers in the direction of deeper reflection about their practice and sharing with their evaluator their stories of success as told through their evidence. We participated and completed our coordinated program review. Yay. We participated and completed our coordinated program review, yay. Feedback came back from the state in for our ELA Civil Rights and Special Education, and all four districts are now operating within compliance for ELL, Civil Rights, and Special Education, as demonstrated through submitted progress reports to DESI. We also did have site visits from DESI to provide further evidence of compliance. Around technology, we did just, we are almost in completion of our year three of the Chromebook One-to-One Initiative at the high school, and that has been rolling out with great positive results. And we've also had monthly goals of utilization of technology to support the completion of assessments for immediate feedback. In the area of professional development, we continue to look for and offer more graduate courses. There are two within the district, within the region, that were offered this year or will be offered over the summer. We continue with workshop opportunities for teachers in the area of SEI. SEI is Sheltered English Immersion, which is a necessity for relicensure for our teachers. Our district PD days, which focused on meeting diverse needs, were very successfully attended and received very positive feedback. Our administrative leadership team participated in Planning for Success, which Joy will be sharing with you in a bit, to create district action plans. As far as our state assessment system, our MCAS Action Plan was created with six goals under the topics of instructional strategies, professional development strategies, and technology strategies, and implementation in grades seven and eight were extremely successful. For wellness, our school nurses created and continued and distributed their wellness newsletters. And I do want to highlight this because I think that this is really neat. This was the first year that both Halifax and Halifax Elementary School and Kingston Intermediate School implemented the breakfast program, and that was with great success. So I just wanted to highlight that. Our new teacher induction program continued as remodeled last year. We had one new administrator participate and 20 new teachers. Monthly meetings were all together with mentors and new teachers. Under ELL regulations, ELL's English Language Learners are, we had an ELL course that was designed last year by two of our teachers within the region, Lana Turezka and Karen Lundie, and they, they offered the course twice this year, so our teachers could obtain 15 professional development points in the area of ELL for relicensure. We are offering another ELL workshop this summer incorporating technology into the, into ELL instruction. Around building and safety, we administrators over last summer participated in the ALIS training with the idea of training their own staff in their buildings, and all staff within all schools participated in ALIS training with support from all three police departments in each town, and for that, we are extremely thankful. Our policies continue to be updated and have been posted online in our current. And as far as our academic and civic accomplishments, if we can skip over to our middle school and high school. Middle school, 13 students were selected through audition and participation in the Junior SEMSBA Music Festival. The Silver Lake Regional Middle School Community Builders Club has partnered with the American Foundation for Children with AIDS for the 2016-2017 school year to raise money for livelihoods projects in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. These projects provide livestock seeds and training to child-headed households who've been adversely affected by AIDS. Middle school Drama Club put on two places here, Elf and Beauty and the Beast, which were wonderful. The Silver Lake Middle School Bot Ball Robotics Team presented to the 2017 Bot Ball Competition at UMass Lowell. There were 18 teams, schools represented in the competition, 16 high school teams, and only two middle school teams, and Silver Lake Middle School outscored some of the high school teams. One middle school student qualified for the National History Bee in Atlanta, Georgia. We had new courses continue to emerge and be implemented into the master schedule. In our high school, our high school again was named by the College Board an Advanced Placement School of Distinction, which is awarded to only the top 10% of schools in the nation, something we should be extremely proud of. We had 77 students awarded the John and Abigail.
The students present what they presented at the competition, so I want to thank Julie Walker and our students for a wonderful job. So, and that's it for me, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you know offhand how many kids are coming up, Step Up?
For Step Up Day, I think we have, I think it's like 271.
Okay, great.
Maybe 276.
Must be, must be, yeah, that's a send them over, right?
Yeah, we had, yeah, we got a few. I mean, what happens is we get a number from the schools, and then we get some numbers that come in.
Right.
So we had maybe like four or five come in from like Sacred Heart.
Yeah, sure.
And some, something, so.
So that's good.
So it's somewhere, somewhere in there.
Okay, nice.
That's off the top of my head, so.
No, no problem.
Wonderful, thank you. And the final report.
It's not a long one. Same thing, you know, to go on the heels of Jim, you know, this time of year is awards nights and celebrations, and obviously, starting off with graduation, that's where a lot of my sentiments went towards the kids. You know, our superintendent spoke so eloquently after me on, she did a great job at the podium. It was a great day, the rain held off. Now, I, I don't want to jinx the next person or the people prior to me, but I was principal for four years, I never had an indoor graduation.
Oh, my God.
That is a pretty good record here.
That's just unfair to say something.
Pressure's on, because a generation have not experienced indoor graduation, so when that happens, ooh.
Right.
Okay. Obviously, I want to thank everybody involved with graduation. I know many of you participated over there, and I appreciate you being there. A lot goes into graduation. We start the meetings in January. I want to thank the graduation committee, which is made up of Michaela Gill and Steve Blatt and Karen Tringalli. Special thanks to the parents involved, Mrs. Batista, Mrs. Johnson, and Mrs. Roy, who, you know, the, the parents involved on that graduation committee, they, they stuff the caps and gowns and the tickets, and they help out with distribution on that day. That whole week is, that whole graduation week is really, it's an enjoyable week, but hectic. We're practicing for you, outdoor and indoor graduation. We're having the final senior class meeting, which is catered by our culinary students. It's one of their last major projects. They cater a breakfast for, you know, 270-plus students and staff that enjoy the meal as well, including myself. They do an outstanding job in the cafeteria, they get yearbooks on that day. So again, that committee with those people I mentioned, as well as senior class advisors, Megan McGovern and Melissa Fontaine, and all the teachers that help out during graduation that, that are there during the rehearsals, the practices, they read the speeches and edit the speeches that the kids make. They help during rehearsal times, you know, where to line students up and how that process goes. I also want to thank the custodians. There's all hands on deck on that Saturday, middle school and high school custodians that are setting up and breaking down possibly two setups. I call them early in the morning, and, you know, if the weather's bad, they got to set up and, they got to take things down and set them up inside. Class of 67 are honored guests. Linda Redding, our librarian, who hosts them that morning and pulls out all the old Silver Lake pictures and yearbooks and runs a slideshow, and our cafeteria that provides, you know, a little, little repass, you know, in the library before the ceremony takes place, and the 40 to 50 staff members that are there in gowns that lead the students out, as well as the school committee members. It's really the biggest community event in the district as far as school is concerned. It's the end for those students. And this year, we had some different traditions that were started. Mrs. Gill did a great job with the parade, very proud of her and, and everybody involved in that. It was a great day. I know some of you went to the different schools to see. I saw Maureen at, at Denne, you know, just for those kids, I think, for those kids and the print, the elementary school principals and any, any adults that were involved in that, it was just a, it was a great day for them. We added Decoration of the Caps, which is something we've never done, and they were very tasteful, they did a good job. There was guidelines involved, we did check them out. You know, we added the.
Red, then the.
Everybody wore red this year, and the gray, you know, sashes.
Sashes.
Sashes. Very nice touch, and I think everybody looked great, and again, we beat, we beat the rain. So great day by all. I really want to thank everybody, everyone involved. It was a special day and one that I'll always remember, and I congratulate all the families and the graduates. That's the most important part of that day. It's all about the students and the families and, and a remarkable achievement that they had, so they'll always remember that. Last night, we had our Evening of Excellence. We had over 340 students receive over 500 awards. This night is always standing room only. The most impressive part of the night and process is that it's completely done by our faculty. I want a special thanks to Vivi Leusis, one of our math teachers, who organizes the event from start to finish. She enlists, you know, creates the form that, that the nominations come in from our staff. Our staff members, many of them are in attendance to congratulate the students up on stage as they receive awards in different, in the various subject areas, as well as additional areas such as meritorious effort and attendance and leadership and such, and the, and the big book awards at the end. So I want to thank everybody involved with that special evening for our underclassmen. As Jim said earlier, we had Step Up Day today. All grade eight students visited the high school. They, they toured the building, they saw three main areas, cafeteria, the auditorium, and the large group room as they walk around. This is really the second of three stages as far as them transitioning up to the heights, high school. In February, they come by and they, they visit our shops, and they, they meet with myself and Mr. Glass and, and the various teachers of our CTE programs. They come here for Step Up Day in June, where they see some, they, they have, we have a club fair in the, in the, an activities fair in the cafeteria, many of our athletic programs and, and social clubs are there to, the booths, so the students can get some information, ask some questions of the upperclassmen who work those booths. Also, there's a performance by our coral program in the auditorium for students to, to witness another great area of our school, and then up in the large group room, they get to meet the administrators, the counselors, some other peer leaders, and our librarian, and a little introduction to the school, and a little video introduction. That's the second part. The third part, obviously, is our freshman orientation, which will happen on August 18th, where they'll come in with tour groups, get their schedules, walk the building, visit areas that they didn't get to see today, ask a lot of questions. They receive their Chromebooks usually on that day, and their eyes are, they get wider and wider each time. This, this, this day kind of goes over their head a little bit because it's June and they're thinking about leaving for the summer, and I try to remind them that in the meeting. And then in August, they're really, you know, hyper-focused on starting school, and there's a lot of questions on those days. So our peer leaders, our upperclassmen, and our teachers that volunteer on that day to come and help out with, lead the tours and help out with the transition overall from eighth to ninth grade. So I want to thank David Perron, one of our guidance councils, and Renee Donahue, who was here earlier today, the middle school guidance counselor on organizing Step Up Day for the sixth graders coming up to the seventh grade and the eighth graders coming up to the ninth grade. It's a, it's a big process, so it's a successful day here near the end of the year, especially after we just finished MCAS earlier in the week. So very busy time as we wrap up the school year. Final exams are coming up. June 15th is our first day of exams. It's a full day of school. Periods two and three exams are that morning, and then we finish out the rest of the classes that day. And then the rest of the days, the 16th, which is a Friday, the 19th, Monday, and the 20th, Tuesday are half-days. The 16th, period four and five exam, there's 19th, period six and seven exam, and then on the 20th, there's one exam in the morning, period one, and dismissal is at 9:00 a.m. Earlier in the year, early, mid-April, right before vacation, a schedule had gone out to the parents regarding final exams, times, dismissals, everything else. So everybody has that. So we're, we're rapidly coming to the close of the school year, and once again, thank you for everything, so.
Thank you, Jim.
That's my.
Future meetings, last day of school, as Jim indicated, the 20th of June. Our next meeting is July 13th. It'll be here before we know it. We have no need for executive session. I'm sorry, Maureen, just one second. The only other thing I want to mention was thank you again, Galen, for coming in tonight and taking the minutes. We so appreciate it in Lisa's absence, so thank you so much.
And for those of you who don't know, Galen is not even officially a staff member yet. She won't be beginning until July. She is replacing Josie Gore, retiring secretary. Lisa unfortunately had to be at a funeral tonight, so Galen was kind enough to step up to take minutes, so thank you. So we're welcoming her before she even officially is here. So thank you, really appreciate it.
Wonderful start for you, thank you. Maureen.
I just wanted to mention, we had an election in May, or in, I don't know, Kingston voted theirs, but to welcome back to the committee Jason Frazier, who's back for three years, Mark, who's elected to stay a year, Laura, I believe you took.
So he says.
And Ed. So welcome back.
Congratulations.
Good point. Thank you.
Which is wonderful, right?
The only thing, the town meeting. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The other thing, to Maureen's point, all the town meetings obviously voted our budget. They were voted unanimously in all the towns. We really appreciate all the town's support. You know, we worked really hard to provide a budget that meets our students' needs, but also meets the towns' needs. So I'm thrilled to say that we continue to have the great support of the towns, and we'll continue to work hard to provide a great education.
Thank you. With that said, motion to adjourn.
And for cake.
And for cake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Would anybody oppose?
Yeah.
Thank you, folks.